With us today, we have Mr. Gustavo Salinas, Nadia Cantú. I don't know if Amanda Suniga is here already, and Adriana Ibañez.
And this proclamation was sent to us by Mr. Gustavo Salinas from the Texas Department of Family and Protective Services. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas people who are elderly or have disabilities have contributed to the general welfare of this city by helping to preserve customs, convictions, and traditions of many people from diverse backgrounds. Whereas these residents are vital and integral members of our society, and their wisdom and experience have enriched our lives. Whereas abuse of the elderly and people with disabilities in domestic and institutional settings is a widespread problem affecting hundreds of thousands of people across the country. Whereas in 2020, there were 86,614 completed cases of elderly and disabled person abuse in Texas, of which 52,506 were confirmed. Whereas elder abuse is grossly underreported because the elderly who are being abused find it very difficult to tell anyone and are usually ashamed and sometimes afraid. Whereas elder abuse happens to men and women of all income levels and cultural and ethnic groups, whether they are in good health or incapacitated in some way, in poor neighborhoods and in suburbia. Whereas many of the cases investigated by Adult Protective Services in Texas involve self-neglect and is our duty as citizens to reach out to people in need. Now, therefore, we, the City Council, the City of Mission, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2021 to be Elder Abuse Prevention Month in Mission and urge all citizens to work together to help reduce abuse and neglect of people who are elderly or have disabilities. Proclaimed on this the 14th day of June 2021.
We have a motion to approve this proclamation and a second by Mr. Plata. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. The proclamation has been approved. And you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and the Commission. My name is Gustavo Salinas. I represent Adult Protective Services. And so I want to first say that we are very grateful for the opportunity today to create awareness of elder abuse. It's something that we are all connected to an elder, whether it be our parents, our friends, families, or neighbors. So we need to be vigilant about what we're seeing in the community because really that report that you make gives us the opportunity to go and visit with them and see what services they need so that we can provide them. So again, thank you so much for this opportunity.
Yes, sir.
You're welcome. Before we take the full picture, if you want to come over here. So I see I can take the picture here. That's the provide you with the original.
Sure.
And congratulate you for all the elders in Texas.
Thank you.
And especially you, our county manager. Under that, the council. Okay, now if you all want to come over here so we can take a little picture and play our stop. Stop, you, Lella, you tap one. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you. I'll call for presentation number two. Mr. Flores, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and citizens of Mission. We are proud to announce the rollout of our community engagement platform known as MyMission311. It is a dynamic, very well put together product put together by GoGov. And we've been working on it in a beta test, but we're ready to roll it out to the public. With us today is Kevin Strauss from GoGov. And he's going to give you a brief presentation, very brief presentation, and awesome time for question and answers. Kevin?
Yes, thank you, David, and members of the council. So we've been working with David and Jesse Lerma and the rest of the team to help roll the solution out. Essentially, what we're providing is a software that has aspects both citizen and staff facing to help track and manage citizen requests and concerns. So the citizen-facing piece really centers off of a mobile app. And it's called the MyMission311 app. And it's available for download on both Apple and Android and free for download from the App Store for your citizens. So I have it downloaded on my device, which you can see here on my screen. And the purpose of the app really is kind of three main things that we are going to be able to have citizens do once they download it. The first one is to get all sorts of useful information at their fingertips, and that's these buttons that you see here. And I want to just point out, anything that you're seeing here is all editable. So as we continue to work with the team, we can change the way the graphics look. We can change the buttons that are here. These are all things that will be able to be changed as we go forward. But kind of use number one will be, hey, I want to get all sorts of useful information, like viewing who my elected officials are, so I can go ahead and easily access that. Or perhaps I'd like to check out the city calendars to see the events coming up. So it's kind of use number one is getting useful city info at my fingertips. Use number two is going to be to receive messages and alerts. So the city is going to have the capability to draft up messages for things like road closures, COVID updates, event announcements, public meeting announcements, and send those out via push alert to any citizen that has their app on their device. And then kind of the third thing that's going to be able to happen here is as a citizen, I'm going to be able to easily report any sort of problem or concern that I might find, whether that's a road and streets issue, a code enforcement concern, I need help getting my garbage or some brush picked up, whatever it happens to be able to do that. And what I was hoping to do here in this just couple of minutes is just walk you through what that process looks like for a citizen. So once they have the app open, there's a button that says start request. And what they're seeing here are a listing of topics that the city has kind of chosen to make available for citizens to submit. So basically, as a citizen, I can either scroll through or search for what it is that I'd like to go ahead and put in. So I'm kind of just searching through some different terms here. Perhaps I've decided that I want to put in a street or a sign issue. So I'm going to go ahead and click on that. And it first asked me if I have any photos to add. So if I don't, I can say no photo. If I want to open my camera and take a picture right here now, I could certainly do that. What we find most commonly is folks have already taken a photo of the issue, and they're able to go ahead and grab it right here out of their photo library. So I've got the pictures that I want. And then what the app will actually do is either A, pull the location right off of the photo, or B, use their phone's current location to kind of assume that's where the issue is. If for some reason, the issue is not where we're standing, we can easily use this map to simply drag and drop the pin and kind of indicate where it is that we saw this kind of issue occur. Lastly, there's just a couple of questions to be asked. And what they're asked here is very much dependent on what it is that they're submitting. So you know, the folks that handle a street and sign request might require different information than the folks say, for example, in code enforcement, receiving a concern. So everything here is going to get set up based on specifically what the city, you know, kind of needs. And also per topic, making sure the staff are getting the exact information they need so that things can get handled as quickly as possible. So I'm just going to say, please fix this issue. And I'm going to go ahead and click submit. And I get a confirmation right here on my screen that my request was submitted. It gives me a number. And then it also tells me that anytime I can go ahead and track my request here in the track request screen, where I can easily see this issue is open. Currently, no update, but as the staff kind of work through this, there'll be kind of little alerts and notifications that happen along the way to keep the citizen informed with what's going on. So yeah, that's pretty much the process for that. And then the way that this gets set up, I mentioned there's a staff-facing component, is that based on the specific type of thing that's being reported, there is a predetermined staff member who's going to get assigned that when it gets submitted. So this ensures that when citizens report things, it goes then quickly and easily directly to the folks that handle and work on those. And then there's a staff software to go ahead and track and manage the various different things that are submitted. Without going into a crazy amount of detail, and I'd be happy to do follow-up meetings, you know, for anyone that's interested to kind of explain this in further detail. But basically, once the staff go ahead and mark the issue as completed, they'll be able to indicate why it got closed out. And what we're going to see, once I go ahead and do this really quickly, is that when the issue gets closed out, if I'm the citizen that submitted this, I'm going to automatically receive a push alert to my phone that tells me the issue I submitted at a specific date on a specific time has been closed. And then when I click on it, it brings me into the app. It's going to give me a big kind of green tag indicating to me that it isn't de-close, and then a checkmark that says resolution, which includes some text explaining to them why it got closed out. So what we find overall is this tool really helps to improve citizen satisfaction. Also definitely helps to improve staff efficiency. And overall, this kind of strengthens the relationship back and forth, you know, between the constituents and then the folks that work at the city, you know, to kind of help keep it a great place to, you know, live, work, and visit. So I'm going to stop right there. And I know a lot of times there's a lot of questions. So I'll go ahead and open it up for any questions that anyone might have.
You expect it when?
We can roll it out tomorrow morning.
Good.
It's... It's going to. Yes, so each department has their own staff, you know, for streets. Gabriel, you know, those guys that are out in the field, the supervisors, superintendents of those divisions will get the notifications. They'll go ahead and track. They have the ability to log in and be able to track and note. And as things are being worked on, they put in the comments. Those comments are being tracked. We're tracking that at our level to not only see the number of requests, but we can also track the proficiency. We can collect that data so that we can determine, hey, does this department really have the means to be able to handle all of the issues that are at hand? And so we can adjust staffing, equipment, whatever it is, to become more efficient.
I would like to let the public know that 311 does not replace 911 for emergency purposes. You know, we need to make that clear. That we need to make that very, very clear. And 911 is for emergency purposes. And 311 is for operational purposes.
That is correct. It very is. It's very simple to use on the user end and on the backend as well. It has a lot more functionality, which we'll roll out as the months go on. And we'll keep you updated on the progress.
Since it's not an action item agenda item, I guess consensus from the council would be to put it into play tomorrow at 8 o'clock in the morning. 4800, is that a good time?
Yes, sir. And it is, yes, sir. And it is available on the Apple Store and also on the Android Play Store, I think it's called. So it is available already to download on your cell phones. And we'll do that for thing tomorrow.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Flores.
All right, thank you. You'll have a great day.
Call in a presentation, agenda item number three. Ms. Mungia, you have the floor. Or Ms. Lerma, you're going to speak for Ms. Mungia. Go ahead. You have the floor, man.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. At this time, I'd like to invite our chief, our Chief Gilbert Sanchez. Please join me up here. I have the distinct pleasure of introducing our employee of the month, and I'd like to invite him as well. He is firefighter Gerardo Garcia. We know him as Gary.
Gary, if that's your family here, step forward.
I would like to share a little bit about firefighter Garcia. He's a physically active individual and understands that being a firefighter is a very physical demanding job. Firefighter Garcia promotes healthy eating habits and the importance of living a healthy lifestyle to our firefighters. He works with firefighters in the gym and teaches them the proper fitness techniques that will not only help them perform better in the field, but help them with everyday lifestyle changes. Firefighter Garcia provides nutrition advice to those who ask and those that want to be more health-conscious and make better nutrition decisions. He will provide weekly workout routines for other crews so that they too can participate. He's happy to share his knowledge and encourages others on a daily basis. In the month of April, we hosted the Regional Fire Academy Cadets three times, and firefighter Garcia happily evaluated them and provided them with plans on how to improve. We appreciate and thank firefighter Garcia for his dedication and commitment to helping others live a healthy lifestyle by promoting healthy eating habits and fitness goals. We are proud to recognize our firefighter Jerry Garcia as the employee of the month for April 2021. Congratulations. As chief, to say a few words first.
Well, Gary's been with our department quite a bit. He is part of my wellness and fitness committee that is going to implement the SOPs in regards to the fitness of the department and health. As mentioned on his synopsis of why he was nominated, he is a great asset to our department in regards to the fitness. He is also assisting my staff in regards to the equipment requesting for the budget year as well. So he's a great part of our department.
And you have, and then you have the floor and...
City Commission Chief, I'd like to say thank you for this award. When I became a firefighter, never thought I'd receive an employee of the month award. That's not why I became a firefighter. But like I said before, I love health and fitness. I love being a firefighter. So it's awesome when I can do both, combine them together. Hopefully, help my team live a longer lifestyle. And at the same time, help our citizens as a firefighter. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Presentation item number four is Mr. CJ Sanchez, you have the floor. Or if you're on Zoom, you have the camera.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. Yes, I'm, I'm filling in for Brenda Enriquez, our, our Chamber President today. She's currently out of town at a tourism college conference. So her and Jennifer Espinoza, our Tourism Director, are gaining some knowledge and ideas to bring back and to put into play for our, our tourism efforts here for the City of Mission. But I just wanted to give a quick update on what we have coming up for the, with the, with the chamber. And we're currently in the planning process for, for two of our upcoming signature events through, for the rest of the fiscal year. We've got our Buena Estar de this luncheon coming up. On September 16th is the date we're looking at right now. We're currently putting our speaker lineup together. As of right now, we have three confirmed, three out of four panel, panelists confirmed for our community leader spotlight. And that'll be Mr. Nick Rhodes, Senator Chuyen Ousah, and Sarah Hammond from Atlas Electric. So it'll be a great, a great program, and we're, we're looking forward to, to continuing the, the planning process. Nominations for GMCC Business Membership Awards have gone out as well. Those will be presented at our annual awards gala taking place on, tentatively, that's scheduled for right now on October 21st. But we are, we are, those nomination forms have gone out to the membership and have been promoted on our social media. So if you guys are members of the chamber and would like to nominate your, your businesses for, for some awards this year, please, please make those submissions to the GMCC office. We've got a couple of programming events coming up soon. We've got our two programs that we do that are teaming up with the Small Business Development Center with UTRGV. It's the E-commerce Roadmap, Getting Your Business Online. That's taking place on Tuesday, June 15th. And we've got the data behind social media taking place on June 22nd. This coming week, we've got one of our investors that is having a groundbreaking ceremony. That's Gano and Sons Trucking. So the chamber will be represent, will, will be out there conducting the groundbreaking ceremony. And of course, Mayor and Council, you guys are, are welcome to attend that event as well. Other than that, we're working on, on, on some efforts to, you know, like I mentioned, to increase our, our tourism efforts and things as, as things start getting back to normal, getting back to more networking events and in-person events. So we're, we're looking forward to, to getting the ball back rolling in a more of a, a normal form, normal fashion. So that is it for the chambers update. So thank you, guys.
And thank you, CJ. Council, any direct questions to the Mission Chamber or comment? Okay, thank you, CJ, again. I'll be calling for presentation item number five, departmental reports. In your package, you have the departmental reports. Any questions, Mr. Perez will address it, and if he needs his directors, he will call. We have a motion to approve the reports as presented. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any final discussion by any of the council members? All those in favor say aye. All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries, departmental reports are approved five zero, and I'm calling for item number six, citizen participation. Ms. Carrillo, who, who do we have first?
Yes, Mayor, we have Mr. Tony Cordova.
Mr. Cordova, you have the podium, come up and please state your, your name and your address for the record. And, and you have three minutes, sir, to, to let us know your points or your issues or your concerns.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Tony Cordova. My address is 1600 Vintage Lane in Mission. And I've got a couple of things that I want to bring to your attention. Number one is this is not the first time I've been before the council. This is probably the third or fourth time. And each time I come up, it's about the same issue. And the issue is the flooding situation on Stewart Road between Business 83 and 495. This thing has been addressed several times, and up to this point, I haven't seen any action taken on it. And here we are, the beginning of the hurricane season. I can only believe that we're going to have more and more rain. And the situation has not been alleviated, we're still going to have a problem. I'd like to see some action on that. If we can't have any action on it before the hurricanes, when the rain comes, the least you could do would be to place a police unit on each end of Stewart Road, one at 495 and one at Business, to prevent people from coming in, because when the water gets high, vehicles come through, they make waves. Water is high enough, waves make the water go into the, into residences. I have been informed that there may be some pumps on order to help alleviate that situation. I'd like to know what the status is with those pumps. And I understand we have a big pump at the, the south end of Stewart Road at Business 83. And that pump operates with a float. And when the water gets to a certain level, it comes on. We need to start that pump before it gets to that level or lower the float. Okay? The last thing I want to talk about is the variances. Back in December, there was a lot of violations issued in our subdivision. And as I understand, most of them have been alleviated, except for one. And that is a neighbor of mine that built a treehouse. Started out to be a treehouse, now it's a living quarters. They've got, in the first place, he didn't get a permit for it. In the second place, he's got power going to it by means of an extension cord from the house to the treehouse, which is now living quarters for somebody. They've got TV in there, they've got AC unit in there and a bed. And it's, the shack is built with scrap lumber and pieces of old cedar fence boards. And it, it's, it's really an eyesore. And I'd like to see that taken down. This violation was issued in December, here it is June, and no action has been taken. Is there a follow-up?
Your three minutes are up, sir, but I will give you a courtesy of 15 seconds to finalize your points.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll take that 15 seconds. But if there is a follow-up, I don't know how often you do the follow-up or how soon after the initial violation, but somebody needs to take some kind of action on this thing. I would appreciate. And one more thing is I wanted to update on the time schedule for the improvements that are going to be made on Stewart Road. I have a, I have a plan, but I don't have a time schedule. I'd like to get that.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Perez will have taken the notes now for your request, and he will be responding to them tomorrow.
Thank you very much. I'm dressed like this because we had two military heroes today, and I didn't have time to go home and change before the meeting. So I'm not trying to impress anybody.
Sir, it's an honor for you to be wearing that uniform, sir, especially here in Mission. Yes, sir. Anybody else, Ms. Carrillo?
No, sir, no one else signed up.
Can we check on electronic to make sure that there's nobody sign up for citizen participation? Charlie and Alex? No? I'll be closing the citizen's participation, and I'm going to be calling for public hearing, and I'm calling for item number seven. Ms. De Luna, you have the floor, man.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item number seven is a rezoning for a 7.15 acres out of lot 30-7 West addition to Sheridan. This is from Agriport to C3 General Commercial. The applicant is Alfredo Nivea. And the council is inclined to approve this item, and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located approximately two, two miles and a half miles north on Conway Boulevard, along the east side of Conway Boulevard. Surrounding zones include to the north City of Palmhurst, to the east and west Agricultural. To the south, you have the United Irrigation District and Single Family Residential. Existing land uses is vacant to the east-west, to the south are single-family residences. And to the north, it belongs to City of Palmhurst. This area is currently zoned, or future land use map has it as general commercial. Staff notes that there's an existing warehouse on the property, which was probably used for commercial while in the county, this property was annexed to the city back in January of 2019. Therefore, the need for the rezoning. Staff is recommending approval since it needs the future land use map and the surrounding land uses. We did note that staff didn't see a petition against it. There were a total of six signatures, but only two of them were within the 200-foot radius. And basically, they don't want commercial. This item is not before you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the rezoning? If you, in the audience, please approach the podium at this time. I do not see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I will call for, is there anybody in the public hearing by electronics? Charlie? Alex? No? I will close this public hearing and ask for guidance from the City Council.
I'm over approval, Mayor.
Second. We have a motion to approve in the second. I'll open it for final discussion by any of the council members. All those in favor say aye. All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries ordinance 5026 is approved five zero. And I'm calling for item number eight.
Item number eight is a rezoning for a 1.27 acre tract of land out of lot 44, Bellwoods Company Subdivision C. This is from Agricultural to C1 Office Building. The applicant is Aurora Perez. The council is inclined to approve this item, and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located near the northeast corner of Crossboro Road and West Mall 2 Road, along the north side of West Mall 2. Surrounding zones include Agricultural to the northwest and south and general, I mean, I'm sorry, C1 Office Building to the east. Existing land uses include its vacant to the north, east, and south. And there's a single-family residential to the west. The site currently has a single-family. The future land use map shows this area as low density. And although it shows it as low density, staff notes that the following property fronts two mile, which is more conducive to a non-commercial use. C1 proposal is the least congested zone in our commercial zoning hierarchy. Applicant is proposing an insurance office for this site. Staff is recommending approval. This item is not before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this rezoning? If you're at the audience, please come by the podium and address. I do not see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm going to ask for the electronic. Is anybody in electronic on this item? No? I will be closing this public hearing and asking the council for, for guidance. I want to approve. We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this I open it for final discussion by any of the council members. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries ordinance 5027 is approved five zero, and I'm calling for item number nine.
Item number nine is another rezoning for a tract of land containing 27 and 21 acres, being a portion of lot 183 Johnny Sherry Subdivision. This is from Agricultural to R2, which is duplex, fourplex. The applicant is Draganfly6265 LLC. If the council is inclined to approve this item, and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject acreage is approximately 1700 feet north of US Expressway 3, along the east side of Glass Park Road. Except for the southwest corner area, which is a core subdivision that was zoned R1T, the AOL tract is largely square-shaped and predominantly vacant. Surrounding land uses include to the north, single-family residential and mobile modular homes. To the east, agricultural and multifamily. To the west, single-family residential. To the south, R1T, which is town hall residential and single-family residential. Existing land uses include mobile homes to the north and single-family residential. To the east, apartments and a large pond. To the west, single-family residences, and the south is vacant. The desired duplex, fourplex residential zoning appears to be a very good moderate-midnight ground zoning district because of the surrounding land uses and zoning districts. The future land use map shows the north portion as moderate density and the south as general commercial. Duplex R2 being a moderate density would be the ideal stair-step land use to the south. Staff is recommending approval. This item is not before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor against this rezoning? Anybody from the audience, please approach the podium at this time. I do not see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm going to ask for the, if we have anybody on electronics on this public hearing. Alex? We have nobody, therefore I'm going to close this public hearing and ask guidance from the City Council. We have a motion on the floor to, to approve the rezoning. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this I open it for final discussion. All those in favor say aye. All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries the rezoning. Item number nine, ordinance 5028 is approved five zero. And calling for item number 10.
Item number 10 is another rezoning for a 2.487 acres out of lot 30, Bellwoods Subdivision C. This is from Agricultural to C3 General Business. The applicant is Norma G. Cervallos. If the council is inclined to approve this item, and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located approximately a quarter of a mile north, West Mall 2 Road and Conway Boulevard, along the west side of Conway Boulevard. Surrounding land uses include to the north and west Agricultural and to the east and south, general business. Existing land uses include to the north residential, to the east, its first cash pond in Centro Familiar Cristiano. To the west is vacant, and to the south is true fit. The proposed zone complies with the future land use map and surrounding land uses. Staff is recommending approval. This item is not before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this rezoning? If you're at the, in the audience, please step up to the podium at this time. I don't see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm going to close the, the part of the podium in the in-house and then ask for electronic. Is there anybody in electronic on this item? No? I'll be closing the public hearing and asking for guidance from the council.
Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this I open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries ordinance 5029 is approved five zero. And I'm calling for item number 11.
Item number 11 is a conditional use permit for the selling outside consumption of alcoholic beverages for Lucha Lucha Taco Bar. This is at 501 North Inspiration Road, Streets A and B. The legal is lot 61 Georgiana Estate, it's currently zoned general business. And the applicant is La Calaverita Raspas &amp; More LLC. If the council is inclined to approve this item, and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located on the northwest corner of Inspiration and Alberto Trevino, along the west side of Inspiration. This restaurant has been in operation since October 30th of 2020. The applicant has sells tacos, portas, hamburgers, and other items on his menu, and would like to offer alcoholic beverages with their food orders. There are no churches, hospitals, or private schools within the 300 foot, thus compliant with Section 64 of the TABC Code. Days and hours of operation is every day from 11:30 to 11:00 PM. He is proposing fixed employees. Parking is held in common for the plaza, they have a total of 37 parking spaces which are shared. Staff is recommending approval for a period of two years, at which time the applicant will have to renew their TABC. This item is not before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? Anybody from the audience, please approach the podium at this time. I don't see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm going to ask for electronics. Is there anybody in electronics? On the item? On the item? Since there isn't anybody, I'm gonna close this public hearing and ask guidance from the council. We have a motion on the floor in a second, and then we open it for discussion. You have the floor.
Alex, can you move it back to the picture where it's showing all the building? How old is this picture? The other one. You see all of that debris that's there in the corner? I know it has nothing to do with what we're, but can you address that? If it hasn't been addressed, it looks like a bunch of trash or something. Okay, just double check, because if there's gonna be more people going in that area, I'd like for it to look clean.
Can you let us know in the next minute?
Thank you.
Any other question? Calling for a vote. All those in favor say aye. All those who oppose, same sign. A motion carries ordinance fifty thirty is approved five zero, and I'm calling for item number twelve. Ms. Luna, you have the floor.
Excuse me, mayor. I need wet zone ordinance also.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the wet zone ordinance also? We have a motion. Do I hear a second? We have a motion in a second, and this I open it for final discussion. All those in favor say aye. All who oppose, same sign. A motion carries and ordinance fifty thirty-one is for the wet zone. And now I'll call him for item number twelve. You have the floor, Ms. Luna.
Item number twelve is a conditional use permit to place a mobile food truck in Choladas, Liz. At nine oh one West Business eighty-three. This is lot four Holland Center. It's currently zoned commercial, and the applicant is Lisette Ramirez. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located on the northwest corner of Holland and West Business eighty-three. The primary business is La Mexico Convenience Store. The applicant wishes to place a mobile food trailer on the northeast corner of the property to sell enchilada mix. Access to the site is from Holland and Business eighty-three. Hours of operation proposed are Monday to Thursday from twelve to ten, Friday and Saturday from eleven to eleven thirty. And Sundays from ten to ten. She's proposing to have two employees. Parking and last game fee for this building will be in compliance. Staff notes that if the request is approved, the applicant is willing to remove the watermill. To place the mobile food unit at that location. Currently, she is, she was proposing it really close to the drive-thru. And that's why we were not in favor. We had, we had a meeting. With them today, and they are willing to remove the watermill to place the mobile, so we're recommending approval.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor against the conditional use permit? Anybody from the audience, please approach the podium at this time. I don't see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm gonna ask for, is there anybody in electronics for item number twelve? I'm gonna close this public hearing and call for the guidance from the council on this item. We have a motion on the floor to approve. Do I hear a second? We have a second, and this I open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye. All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries ordinance fifty thirty-two is approved five zero. And I'm calling for item number thirteen. Ms. Luna, you have the floor.
Item number thirteen is a conditional use permit renewal for the selling onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages. For Taqueria número treinta nueve. This is at twenty-eight thirteen East Griffin Parkway C F. The legal is lot one Adams Crossing subdivision. The property is currently zoned commercial, and the applicant is Jaime Montes. The council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Taylor and Griffin Parkway. The last CUP for this location was approved on May thirteen twenty nineteen for a period of two years. The applicant would like to renew his permit for the sale of alcohol. Hours of operation are Monday to Thursday from eleven thirty to ten P M. Friday and Saturday from twelve to eleven, and Sundays from twelve to ten. He currently has eight people as his staff. Parking is held in common and is made a requirement. Section one fifty-six three A of the zoning code requires such usage to be three hundred feet from residential areas. There is a single-family residential subdivision within the radius. Therefore, they need to wait the separation requirement for this CUP. There were no incidents reported to Mission PD for this location. The staff is recommending approval, subject to a waiver of the three hundred-foot separation requirement to residential neighborhoods. And the CUP to be valid for a period of two years, at which time the applicant would have to renew their TABC and CUP. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor against the conditional use permit renewal? Is there anybody from the audience that would like to approach the bench at this time? The podium is open for anybody in the audience in this public hearing. I do not see anybody approaching the podium, therefore I'm gonna ask for the electronic. Is there anybody for item number thirteen on electronics? I'm gonna close this public hearing at this time and ask for guidance from the council. We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second? We have a second. Any discussion by any of the council member? All those in favor say aye. All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries ordinance fifty thirty-three is, is approved five oh. And we, in this one, we only need one ordinance, am I correct? Okay. Item number fourteen is on the floor. Ms. Luna, you have the floor.
Item number fourteen is a conditional use permit renewal for a restaurant in a property zone C two, neighborhood commercial. This is for the drunken chicken at one oh four North Mayberry Road Suites A and B. The legal is lot fifty-two Mayberry Plaza Unit number two. The property currently zoned is. C two, and the applicant is Juan A. Cantú Junior. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located at the northeast corner of Mayberry Road and First Street. The last CUP for this location was approved on May fourteen twenty eighteen for a period of three years. The applicant would like to renew his conditional use permit for the restaurant. Hours of operation is Tuesday to Friday from eleven to five P M and Saturday from twelve to five. He currently has staff, ten people for his staff parking. There are thirteen parking spaces and are held in common. He is working on repaving the, the parking because it does need maintenance. Since staff has not had any concerns or any reports for this restaurant, staff is recommending approval for a period of three years. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor against this conditional use permit renewal? Please approach the podium at this time for the audience. I do not see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm gonna ask for electronics. Is there anybody on item number fourteen? I'm closing this public hearing and asking guidance from the council. We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second? We have a second, and this I open it for final discussion.
Mayor, I have a question. So with these type of businesses, when do we give or have we ever allowed life abuse?
We haven't. We haven't. There's, there are not very many businesses on a C two zone, and we could either approve it for life. We can. We haven't had any complaints at the restaurant. Or a manner of vote to allow them under S C two. That would be the other. Currently, they're not allowed. They would need to go through a conditional use permit.
So every three years, they would have to come and ask for?
Or we could, if the council is inclined, we could approve it for life.
I'd like to discuss that further in a workshop or something. When we discuss other things, we can discuss a different, how many businesses and stuff. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
So, that, that is on one, that's lot number fifty-two, right?
That is correct.
And so the corner lot would be, well, what is that zone? Is that also C two?
That is, that is also a C two. But a convenience store is allowed on the C two.
So, I mean, the other option is that we could possibly zone that corner C three.
We could do, we could do it or allow, allow the restaurant used on a C two.
I would rather. But, you know, of course, at a later date, because that's not what we're doing today.
We can do that. Consider that the general business for that location.
Any other question by the council? I'm gonna call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries the ordinance fifty thirty-four is approved five oh, and I'm calling for item number fifteen and. You have the floor, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item number fifteen is the discussion and action to consider adoption ordinance. For the Mission Historical Preservation Committee. If the council approves this item, an adoption of an ordinance is needed. This ordinance is requested to be adopted in order to preserve and restore Mission's historical identity. There was no public opposition during the PNC meeting. PNC and the Mission Historical Preservation Committee recommend approval. Staff and city manager recommend approval. And I believe we have members of the commission on Zoom in case we lose any questions.
I need a clarification on this, and Ms. Carrillo just left, right? Yes, sir. This is not a public hearing, am I correct?
Second reading and a vote.
Clarify, please.
We already had a public hearing last month. This is a second reading and a vote.
So today is not a public hearing, right?
It's just a reading and a vote.
It's just placed under the agenda, it's placed under the public hearing.
That's correct.
Okay.
But it requires an adoption of an ordinance, that's why.
That's all it, so no public hearings. Okay, so we'll move forward, and this I open it for the council for approval.
I'm going to approve, mayor.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second? We have a second. Anyone? I apologize for, but it's. Open it for any discussion. All those in favor say aye. All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries and ordinance fifty thirty-five is approved five zero. Thank you. Public hearings are, are closing, and then we're gonna move over to consent agenda. All consent agenda items are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member requests an item to be removed and considered separately. The city council may take various actions, including but not limited to rescheduling an item in its entirety for a future date or time. The city council may elect to go into executive session on any of that items. Whether or not such item is posted as an executive session item. At any time during the meeting when authorized by the provision of the Open Meetings Act. We have a, consent agenda item sixteen, consent agenda item seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. Twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven. I'll open it for the council. If there's a council. Member that wants to pull any of them before we, I call for a vote or a motion.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion to approve all consent agenda items in a second. Any final note at the time for any other council member to put it, pull any of the items out? All those in favor say aye. All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries the consent agenda item five oh for item sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one. Twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven. None of those items require ordinance numbers nor resolution, am I correct? Moving right along to approval and authorization. Item number twenty-eight. Ms. Luna, you have the floor.
Item number twenty-eight is a preliminary tat approval for Western Oaks Phase Two subdivision. This is a ten-acre tract of land being all of lots twenty-three, block nine, Texan Barnes subdivision. The developers Everado and Rigoberto Villarreal. The engineers is a engineering group LLC. The proposed subdivision is a quarter of a mile north of West Mall. Five along the west side of Abrams Road. The developer is proposing to have acres of single-family residential lots. Water will be serviced by Awasud. They are proposing to fire hydrants at swelling station. Sewer will be the aesthetic tank. The drainage report has been approved and reviewed by our city engineer. This item is now before you.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second? We have a second, and this I open it for final discussion. All those in, in favor say aye. All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries item twenty-eight is approved five zero, and I'm calling for item number twenty-one. Correction, twenty-nine. Ms. Bella, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item number twenty-nine is the approval of the April twenty twenty-one tax collection report. The total twenty twenty tax levy was twenty-four million, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents. And the amount of collections as of April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one is twenty-three million, sixty-four thousand, sixty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents. Which represents ninety-four point ninety-two percent of the twenty twenty tax levy. The total delinquent tax levy was two million, four hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-six cents. And the amount of collections as of April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one was four hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fourteen cents, which represents seventeen point fifty-eight percent. Of the total delinquent tax levy. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
We have a motion on the floor in a second, and this I open it for final discussion. All those in favor say aye. All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries item number twenty-nine is approved five oh, and calling for item number thirty. Ms. Bella, you have the floor.
Item number thirty is approval of the April twenty twenty-one financial statement. The total revenues for the month were thirty-three million, four hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and two dollars, and total expenditures were thirteen million, five hundred and thirty-one thousand, seventy-nine dollars. Leaving an ending fund balance of thirty-five million, eight hundred and fifty-three thousand, eighty-four dollars for all funds. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval.
We have a motion on the floor to approve. Do I hear a second? We have a second, and this I open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye. All who oppose, same sign. Motion passes five oh, I for item number thirty, and calling for item number thirty-one. Sir, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item number thirty-one is seeking authorization to accept the grant award for the local park grant program. Non-urban outdoor recreation with the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department. On May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, the Texas Parks and Wildlife Commission approved the city mission's all-inclusive Lions Park project proposal. The grant will support the construction of the park's development in specific areas of the all-inclusive playground area, splash pad area. Shade structures, as well as a percentage of design and engineering costs. The total grant award is in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand and requires a local match in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand. For a total project in the amount of one point five million. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
We have a motion on the floor to approve. We have a second. Open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye. All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries item number thirty-one is approved five oh, and calling for item number thirty-two. Ms. Del Maris, you have the floor.
Sir, if I may, item thirty-two. I would like to request no action on this item and to bring back for a special meeting for. To be project-specific, to solicit for qualifications for each project specifically for this, and so I'm requesting no action on this item.
Well, we're gonna call a special meeting on Friday. On Friday. Can it be Monday?
Monday's time is afternoon.
I, it, it has to be after five. It has to be after five on Monday. Can we do it? It takes me about forty-five minutes, six P M. That okay? We'll schedule it for Monday at six P M, and we'll call it a, a special. A special meeting, so we can be able to take action after, after we explain the, the projects that are going to be for, for drainage and design and. And, and the steps that we're gonna be taking. And we'll create it like a combined workshop, special meeting, but we'll call it a special meeting, so we can take that.
Can I just, I'd like to say that I'm concerned about some, you know, of the way it was presented, there was some of these firms that I have no idea who they are. And that, that, that's concerning.
I think the intent, the intent is, is, well.
I just wanted to have that, you know.
We'll start with six o'clock. We'll start with six o'clock, the workshop presenting on the twenty-seven engineer. And then, and then at, at, at six forty-five, at six forty-five, we do the special meeting.
Okay.
So, okay.
Yes, sir.
And at six, and at six forty-five, we're not gonna, on the workshop, we're not gonna approve the thirty-seven, the twenty-seven engineers, but we will approve the drainage projects for...
Yes, sir.
For release.
Yes, the, the intent would be to, to solicit for qualifications for each individual project individually. And that way we're, it's, it's, each project is independent. And at that point, solicit for, for that project.
And with, with...
And not necessarily approve a pool.
We're not gonna approve...
Engineering project yet.
No. Yes.
We're, we're gonna review the points of the norm. We're gonna approve, and the request is to approve for request proposal
Request proposal.
For each project, and there's seven projects, independent.
Yes.
Am I correct?
That's correct, ma'am.
That's, that's, that's what we came up with, a consensus decision.
That's correct.
Yes. So, 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 so we can start the process of, of looking at the drainage projects.
Moving dirt. I have a question from Mr. Belmas. Seven projects that we're gonna be discussing in that workshop, can they be done all consecutively? Or they have, we have to do one individually? Until one's done, we start the other one?
The, the intent is that each project will be independent. And each project will have a timeframe. And each project will be, the, 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 once we get the, the request proposal back, each project will be identified and entered separately.
And it can be...
But they can run concurrently?
Yes.
Well, the intent is for all, all seven of them to be run concurrent and finished within six o'clock.
Okay.
You know, or, or not, not finish, but, but get the, the engineering...
Get it going.
Six o'clock.
Ranking committee either, for that meeting?
Yes, yes.
Well, for the...
Whoever the ranking committee.
Or is it about for the twenty-seven engineers or for the...
Seven projects.
The approval for proposal.
No, the ones who review the twenty-seventh.
Yes.
We'll formulate a committee of our experts in-house, our engineers.
So we don't have one yet. We don't have...
Yes. We, we, the committee that was originally went over the qualifications, yes. We do have a committee that went over all twenty-seven, so they will be present.
Wants for them to be present.
Yes, we, we will have them present.
So they can give us an idea about...
That's fine.
Well, besides the scope of work and the qualification, the boundaries of the qualification per set.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm gonna be calling for item number thirty-three. And Mr. Belmas, you have the floor, sir.
Item number thirty-three. Authorize staff to solicit for proposals for qualifications for veterans memorial project. Staff is seeking authorization to allow us to solicit qualifications for project scope, design, and construction documents for veterans memorial project in accordance with the Texas Professional Services Maintenance Act. Veterans Memorial Project will be located on a ten-acre tract of land donated by Rhodes Enterprises. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. This I open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries and it's approved by vote. Or, yeah, I didn't hear your voice.
Yeah, of course. I, I actually have some questions, but we're already into the vote, so...
Well, it's request proposal. This is the follow-up from the last time that...
About the land. It was donated, right? The land was already donated.
The deed's already...
I've seen the final, the final proposal drafted, the deed, the donation deed, which was drafted by Matt Jones. It's in order. The only thing in there that's, that's, is, there's a five-year reverted clause. We have, upon taking the land, we have five years to actually make a significant attempt to build the park.
And we'll be in good faith by then.
Okay.
You know.
Then I'm all right.
All right. Okay. Motion carries by vote.
Thank you.
Item number thirty-three. Unfinished business, do we, are we gonna table?
No, sir.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna address the, okay. And call it routine matters. City manager, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I just, I wanna thank again the end-of-watch writers to remember who honored Officer Cabrera this morning. They'll be traveling throughout the U S. And Officer Cabrera will be displayed on their trailer throughout the U S as they visit each of their respective cities. So I thank them for, for that honor this morning. Also, we will be, along with launching the three-one-one app, and we'll also send out the information to the public regarding the, the app as well. We, we will be also launching a community calendar this week. The way the calendar will be on our website, and that will include any and all activities or, or events that will, that are community-related, will be posted on the community calendar. So there is an ability for anyone to post on there. However, we do approve the item to be posted on there. So we will be also launching that community calendar this week. Also, sir, because of the possibility of the formation of a disturbance in the Gulf, we will be distributing sandbags starting tomorrow all week as we prepare. Or if, if it comes our way, if not, you know, we all also take a proactive approach on offering the sandbags to our residents. So we'll start that operations tomorrow.
Okay. And moving right along in, in the mayor's comment, I was gonna mention that ten days ago, I put the city manager and our E O C coordinator on standby to make sure that they monitor and observe the, the, the Gulf because we had, I have received the, the first warning that the possibility of a disturbance being developed in the, in the Gulf. At this time, it has a fifty percent chance of, of turning into a depression within, within the next five days. The multiple models, they don't, they don't seem to jive which one it is. But one of them does have it pointed to the, to a little bit north of the, of the valley, which means that we get the left side of it and so forth. So, but right now, most of the models are saying that, that it's gonna lean toward the east of the, of the Gulf. And not that I'm saying send it to somewhere, to other people, so other people can suffer. You know, that's not my intent. The only thing is that we just need to watch it, to watch it, monitor, and I'm glad that it's sandbagged because, you know, and make sure that we send out the notice early in the morning because the phone calls will, as soon as it hits the media that it's definite, that it's beginning to move, then, then we'll have received the phone calls. All of us will receive the phone calls of where and where the sandbags and so forth. And obviously, drainage is in the minds of every, every individual here in the city mission because the last, the last twenty-five phone calls, the majority, at least twenty of them have been drainage-related. You know, and, or, or as a result of the drainings and result of, of an emergency or a result of a crisis. So, so we need to ensure. And I know, I know staff, I wanna compliment the staff because I know that especially the brush people, you know, I see them going up and down every day, you know, and, and, and the consultants also, you know, as far as that. And the, the ones that are working real hard and trying to, to do the, the cutting of the grasses, grass also because that's, that's been a, and I know, I know that they're all tired and, and weary, you know, but we must go on. Must go on. You know, we gotta bring back the city back to normal as, as soon as we can. And hopefully, God will give us a break and not send us any more crisis to our city where we can catch up. But at this time, I'd like for all the employees that, that are frontline, first, first responders and, and, and the ones behind the scene also. I wanna personally thank them from the office of the mayor. You know, I see, I see the work. And, and on behalf of the citizens, we thank, thank you all. Move on to city council. Ms. Ortega, you have the floor. Mr. Pla.
Mayor, I would like to see we can have a special meeting or workshop to review some of these contracts that we have with P S I. And maybe any other ones that were mentioned in the article. Or maybe any other contracts that we have that we, are maybe over two million dollars or something that we can go over those. I wanna make sure that we continue doing business with reputable companies.
Well, let's have evaluated and come back with a recommendation when, when you can be ready for, for a workshop. I know that we're booked tomorrow and we're booked next Monday, you know, and we've got some things to write, so, so, you know, so just see what day we can, you know, and I know next week it's gonna be very hard for me to be here during the day, you know, because I'm, I'm gonna be working like five, four days, so, so, but I will be open Friday. So, just, so for scheduling purposes to let you know, so...
Maybe we...
A week on Friday would be good.
Okay.
Okay. And Ms. Garcia, you have the floor. Unless you...
No, I'm done, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah.
I don't know what the week on Friday is, so can I just get back on that?
Yeah.
Okay, but I don't have any comment.
Okay.
No comment.
No comment. Then I'll entertain a motion for the executive session pursuant to V T C A Government Code Section five-five-one point zero-zero-one.
I'm going.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The, the motion passes by vote. And we'll be back.
Green, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. Call 35A. Mr. Martinez, what do we have?
We have no action, Mayor.
We have no action, so I'm gonna call for 36A. What do we have?
We have no action.
We have no action, so... Do I entertain a motion to adjourn?
I want to adjourn.
Second. We have a motion to adjourn and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, aye sign. Motion carries 5-0. Adjourn.